September twenty-six, two thousand sixteen, six thirty-five P M. For this call board. Here? Here? Here?
Here.
Here? Thank you very much. Dan, I would like you to have a conversation, be the charge on this one.
Sorry, um, we... Mary Beth, are you able to turn that map ninety degrees?
Yeah.
Oh, Gary, can you do it? We had a question last week about that, for does it not fit? Question. There you go. Perfect. We had a robust discussion once again last week. Excuse me, relative to CRA, obviously wanted to put it on committee. I'm going to attempt to summarize what our conclusions were, and please correct me if I'm wrong. So, I think what we looked at was eliminating any benefits for new residential construction, drawing back the boundaries to what the original two CRAs were, and the map that's been updated. There was confusion about that last week, but the original two maps are clearly described there, and that map is attached with the proposed legislation, so we've got the map correct. Reducing the other areas, and also reducing the benefit that would exist for people who were doing updates to their houses. So, if you're going to do an update to your house, you're going to put on a garage or something like that, instead of having to qualify for fifty thousand dollars worth of improvement, we would drop that a little bit too, to help the program for the very few people who are doing hand jobs. So, if the goal of the program is to allow people to do rehabs of old homes, which is a good long-term benefit for the city, and that was what we looked at as well, and in the proposal legislation, it's, that number would drop to fifteen thousand dollars. One of the questions that we had, does that sound like a good summary of what our discussion was? So, no new residential, uh, residential CRA, which is a real drop for new, uh, no new residential in its incentive, new boundaries, no new for new construction, and then changes to, the changes to the fifty thousand, not fifty, which would allow for some more media projects. This is, I think, important. One of the questions we had was, what practical difference does that mean? What sort of losses would that mean? What benefit does it provide to the city, or I'm sorry, to the taxpayer? And then what tax losses would exist? So, is it enough of an incentive? Which is the question. So, the statute allows for CRA for improvements, for non-reconstruction, for improvements, but now for twenty-five hundred dollars. But over a ten-year period, I think, it doesn't provide much of a benefit to the taxpayer. So, again, let's assume that if I'm going to put ten thousand dollars' worth of work into my house, I'm only going to get a fourth of that, a change in value. We talked a lot about that. So, if I put a roof on, I'm probably not going to be able to get a change in value. If I put windows in my house, probably not going to be able to get a change in value. But we'll say, somebody has a one-car garage and lives in a two-car garage. Well, if that's a forty thousand dollar project, then they might qualify for ten thousand dollars worth of abatement. So, what does that really mean, as far as our schools are concerned, as far as taxes are concerned? So, if you have the material that we did, Gary, for us kind of put together a spreadsheet, and the numbers show that for a ten thousand dollar increase in valuation, over a ten-year period, a full abatement would receive two thousand dollars of taxes that would benefit, that would, that would near to the benefit of the taxpayer. So, again, fifty percent benefit would be about a thousand dollars, and that, that benefit would be, the schools obviously would lose a little bit of that, because most of that, the city would lose some of that, and county would lose some of that as well. So, again, the question is, if I'm going to do a forty thousand dollar project, am I going to do it for a thousand dollars' worth of taxes or two thousand dollars? I don't know. I'm not sure that that's true, but for the rehab projects we have, it could be a benefit there too. So, those are the things that we talked about there too. But obviously, we decided it made much more sense to limit any proposed abatements to what existed in the past, or what's existed for a very long time, and that is to limit the areas that exist right now, and to the, to the amounts that exist there too. I'll run through these numbers again a little bit more too. So, for, for a twenty thousand dollar value increase, you get four thousand dollars worth of full abatement, and half of that would be two. So, two thousand dollars total tax is over a ten-year period. So, again, not, not a significant amount. And then obviously, the numbers go up from there. Does that make sense? Other questions or concerns there?
And one of the other, I think, big criteria is further defining in accordance itself what the housing officer may consider as residential property. And here, that is, because the terms are used frequently, residential property, residential dwelling, or just the term dwelling that means a place where someone lives. But for CRA purposes, not for anything else in our housing laws, but for CRA purposes, those will be defined as those types of residential properties, your dwellings containing not more than four units. And so, larger apartment complexes that you may believe would fall under commercial, we're going to go ahead and define that. We're going to state explicitly, if there's more than four units, the housing officer has to view that as a commercial property, send it to council for a tax application.
So, if someone wanted to build a ten apartment piece, that person would have to come before us in any other commercial neighborhood, or the public area, and we would make a determination as to whether or not we felt like it was appropriate for a payment or not. We'll discuss that, as would for any other residential building. So, I thank you, Tim, that's obviously very important. So, obviously, one of the big issues that we have is that clarification of definition. We clarify that, and that's where the line is drawn. Also, it's kind of where the county law draws it as well.
We also threw in one additional criteria that we requested, that the housing officer will promptly notify council of the application, whether it's approved or denied. I want to be clear in there that if it's not before the process, because council doesn't have the authority to override the housing officer, so only the housing council has that.
That we were, council, we're any action we say, and frankly, anybody else will, because it's a public, public notification, so we're watching the agenda as well.
And that gives the opportunity to anyone at that, that point, if they wish to look at that and appeal the process, you know right away when it happens.
Well, keep in mind too, the housing council meets once a year, and typically, that housing council wouldn't review that abatement until after one full year of taxes have been abated. So, they would look at it a year after. So, that's, that's something to consider as well. Does anyone else have any comments or concerns regarding this?
That, that portion?
But regarding, as, as a whole. I've been thinking about this, and, and Dan, you brought up the numbers that you were running through, and you asked a question. Would it be worth, you know, applying for that CRA for a thousand or two thousand dollars worth of tax payments over, over ten, twelve years? Well, we have numbers to, to look at, for as long as these CRAs have been in place. Other than the two, the one in Harmon and Northridge, you've had four? Is that right? Four? Okay. And that's over the course of seventeen years?
Right.
And, you know, I'm looking at, and I know Mr. Wendorf wants to address council here in a little bit, and I'm looking at the letter, and that he has sent all of us, and all you have a copy of it. You know, there are, there are some fundamental flaws within this state legislature-sponsored tool, for lack of better terms. One is that council or administration cannot review anything. It's singularly handled by the housing officer, and only reviewed by the housing council after the fact. Secondly, is that right around seventy percent of, of the taxes that are abated come out of the schools. Okay? Everything else is city and county. That's inherently unfair, I think. You know, now, we've talked about this ad nauseam for the last couple of months, and, and what keeps coming up is, it's a tool in the tool belt. You know, I have a tool belt at home, and the tools in my tool belt are the ones that I use on pretty much every project. This is a tool that I, that I don't think really has teeth. And, well, and, and Mr. Tripp, in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, or whatever, brought up some other ideas to help incentivize the defi cation of property, to welcome new homeowners, and I thought that was a great idea, and I think maybe there's, there's some things that we can do as, as a city to abate some costs to the homeowners that won't affect the schools, that I think might be more advantageous for us. Now, I, I get that it's, you know, this is a pro-development approach, but again, I can't get past the fundamental flaws within, within the, within the law. And I don't know, I don't know where you guys stand on this, but, you know, I know there are some that, you know, that would like to see, to see it stay on the books with some of the, the criteria that we, we've talked about last meeting, but I would, I would be in favor of scrapping it all together.
I would second that.
Well, that's just, just one of the things, so you're aware of, we talked about it, and this is more for those that may not have been here at the previous meeting, because we've placed in the ordinance that for residential properties, they have up to six months. So, just so you're aware, for those folks that may have begun a project from the date that council, if indeed it does terminate the CRA for residential property, or for, a little different for commercial and industrial, but for residential, from that date, there needs to be a six-month window for those folks that may have already been working on that. So, we'll set that date from the date that it would become law, terminate that, we'll notify the state agencies, county agencies, and so forth. The big difference with the commercial or industrial is that the housing officer then in receiving that application, turns it over to council, and then council, and the builder, and in certain criteria, if the amounts are sufficient, the school board needs to be involved in kind of a three-way agreement, whether or not they wish to permit that type of a tax abatement, just prior to construction. Prior to construction. Has, the contract has to be entered into, finalized, all of those things, before they begin construction. That way, the builder knows what the details are and the criteria that they have to reach each year. That will be reviewed, you know, both by council, who will pass that on to the, to the Turk, which is the county agency, the county commissioners, and so forth. They give their endorsement, and that gets sent off to the state.
Yeah, the commercial, to clarify for everybody, the commercial piece of what we're doing here, that process doesn't change, limitations don't change, the collaborative conversation that we have with the school board will be exactly the same as it was before. No, no changes proposed for that.
All right, so if we do, if that, decide to scrap it, there is a six-month...
When you say, can I interrupt you just?
Yes.
When you say you're proposing it, you reduce, take all the residential and send it out?
No, I'd say scrap the whole thing.
Well, no, if we, so...
I'd say scrap the whole thing.
Okay, for, for that, if you just scrap the whole thing, for the agreements that you, for really, for all of that you have in place, for those that have approved tax abatements, be it residential or commercial, those who are approved up to this point, they're permitted to continue in that, that window, because it's in essence, you're... So, I didn't want any of them to be concerned that this would stop it. Housing council would still continue if they were within five years of a ten-year abatement. They have the opportunity to continue for another five years. The same thing with the, the commercial.
Yeah. Well, and to that point, that's why I said, if we do decide to scrap the whole thing, there could be a six-month timeframe where someone could come to us and say, I started this construction.
Residential.
Residential. And, and I want to apply for my abatement. Based on history, though, I, I find it highly unlikely. I mean, we've had like, what, four or five in the last seventeen years? I, I find that very unlikely that that's going to happen, but, you know, if it does, then we, you know, the house officer, the council...
So, your motion would be to defeat fifty-two to sixteen?
That, that, that's where, that's where I'm at. It sounds like Martin is in the same place.
Are you for defeating the commercial piece too?
What do you mean defeating the commercial?
Are you for allowing the chores?
We have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. I'm going to take that, we were taking that out, this, this, with this one, right?
Does that why I think that would happen?
Let, let me be clear. Okay. I would be in favor of, of tabling everything on the agenda regarding CRA, and then introducing legislation next time to repeal what we currently have on the books, certified or uncertified.
And not replacing it.
And not replacing it. As of now.
So, I'm going to have to, so I, I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I figured you wouldn't.
Right. Because I think that, from a commercial standpoint, we're not about residential, not at all. I'm talking about Main Street. What are we going to do to see, what we can do to improve the pieces on Main Street? And I think historically, I know historically, that in the parts of our city where we've needed to grow our property, we've made, we've come to very good agreements, that we've negotiated both with the school district and with the people here, where the schools really haven't lost that many taxes in long-term, have gained, because the tax base has grown. We've not agreed to any that have, have been abating beyond fifty percent since the schools worked, ever. That's an historical piece in the city, and I'm sure that Gary's going to continue to not ever ask us to do that, at least if he knows what's good for him along, right, Gary?
Haven't we been doing occupancy grants for the moment, Mark?
We've been doing both. We've been doing both, right.
Which is a...
And although the residential piece has only been used slightly, as you mentioned before, four times, in the recent past, because it hasn't been around for terribly long time, one of the reasons that it has been is because the threshold has been so high. I mean, you've got to do enough improvements to change the value of your house fifty thousand dollars in order to qualify. That's a lot of improvements, particularly in an area where our average value of the house is a hundred twenty-five or a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
And then you lower that threshold far enough, and then the money that you're saving over the course of whatever term it is.
Right.
I mean, is it really become...
So, the broad, fair question, and that was my point with this, but the broader question is, we've been a really lucky neighborhood, because the quality of our housing stock has not diminished at the same rate as almost all of our neighbors. There are a lot of things we have that are a challenge. You know, we have smaller lots, we have an aging population, and we don't have a lot of situations where the things that people consider to be essentials in their houses are automatics. Doug, when you moved into your house, it was a one-car garage.
Right.
And now you, it's a two-car garage. And, and that's important. I mean, I'm not sure that with a new family, when I bought my house thirteen years ago, that I would have bought a house with a one-car garage. And I think that a lot of people are in that position. So, how do we change that? So, how do we change that?
Hi?
And I think the answer is not one or two ways. We can't come up with one program. I hear Larry's proposition is a lot, a lot of things to do, but this is a big problem, and the answer to it isn't one or two things, it's twenty-six little things. And this is one of the little things that we can say, hey, if I'm going to do a forty thousand dollar improvement to my house, over a ten-year period, if the school's not in the apartment, can I get a thousand dollars back? Yeah, that's good for us, and it's better for the schools, because frankly, the house is worth more, and will be forever, if that house has a full garage instead of one car, and any number of those other things.
Well, I concur. It's, it's, to me, it's all about the residential areas. Bring some of the older housing stock up to code, give it, give it fifty-year life. Make it attractive to families that want to move in here, and looking at a seventy- or eighty-year-old house that doesn't have the modern amenities, it doesn't have the double-car garage, it doesn't have maybe a family room, or, or just room, just square footage that you need. So, if the discussion point is, what other opportunities we can bring to those, to those arguments, to those, to that focus in our community, I'm all for it. I thought this was still one of them, if it was just concentrated on residential rehab, but I'm willing to look and see what else is out there. And, you know, I prefer, I don't want to hurt the school's voice, I've always held that, that line on that, so, that's fine. I still think, though, commercially, we should still visit that, where we have an opportunity to bring in income tax, because that's what you're doing with, with the commercial end of those.
One interesting question that I, I think could apply here is, you know, you talk about going from a one-car garage to a two-car garage. I know in my ward, and it's, it's outside of the CRA area, but some of those homes that, in the neighborhood that I feel is at, at risk of taking a turn, there's not room, not room to add on. You can't put a two-car garage out there. You could put possibly a turnaround, or some of the things we've been discussing about the homes on East Maple, Jennifer Clark's house in particular, that would, you know, make it more attractive to a new buyer on a Main Street, but there, there aren't many, within this criteria, there aren't many things you can do to those homes.
You're saying a lot doesn't have the depth, push it back?
Yeah. If there's no depth, the width isn't wide, I mean, the home that...
Fifty, you can do it on fifty, but you've got to have the depth, and you're allowed to push it back, that's the truth.
Well, no, it's not. I, I...
I'm just, I'm saying this double-car garage is either there's more, there's less, and there's...
Right, everything's...
Serious reminder, like kitchen, bathroom, dishes.
Right, yeah. No, I agree with you there. I think that the challenge is, if we have ten houses that do this in the city, and for a short period of time, the schools and the city lose a thousand dollars each for each of those houses, that's ten thousand dollars, that's not nothing, I absolutely acknowledge that, but it's for a short period of time. At the end of the day, we've improved the value, the overall tax base of the city, by more than a hundred thousand dollars, which is hard to do with the decline in age in houses. And more important, so at the end of that ten-year period, we're going to pay them full now, and more importantly, we're able then to get what is a true revenue source for all of us, which is new families who have parents who are working, who are paying taxes, who have kids who are going to school, so that the schools are being paid to have those kids there. I mean, they're, they're the vital neighborhoods that we really want.
I do, I get that argument, I get the philosophical argument where you're going with that, but where are the results?
Well, so, so, let's do this then, and I think that's a fair question too. So, let's agree, maybe the schools will be able to do this too. Let's agree that we'll, we'll evaluate this. Let's say, we're going to do this over a four, two-to-five-year period, or something like that. If nothing changes, if there are no adjustments that are there, then let's get rid of it. Because if we've agreed that it's not, I completely adopt the scientific piece, I absolutely do. If, if lowering the limit doesn't make a difference, then let's get rid of it.
Well, let's promote it. I mean, how many people don't even know about this? We have two people that follow us on YouTube, we have, you know, a thirty percent newspaper rate, people don't know about it, so let's promote it, let's see if it works. You have to remember, when I'm walking neighborhoods, it's a, it's a older population, so we have to do something to keep families here, and the schools have to want that as well. It's a gain and a pain. So, in that, in that aftermath, you know, the second floor, may some families stay as opposed to moving to another district, they benefit as well. They get money for every school student that stays in the district. We have to do something to keep our students here, and all the schools are losing competition. It's just a general different one. So, you want those to stay, to stay here. So, I guess I feel like we keep talking about this, and I, I felt like we were like on some different tracks and that, and I also feel like, if we don't do this, it, it doesn't make us look forward-thinking, it doesn't keep us progressive, it doesn't invite people to say, hey, they're doing something different. It is one of the tool belts, we are keep thinking out of the box, we're thinking differently. When we've had CRA studies, a lot of those other cities, the Worcester's, the Medina's, the Hudson's, the Shaker, those are cities that we want to be associated with, and somehow they're making it work. So, I don't want us to step back and for people to say, no, they want to go back the same old ways, they're not thinking forward, we don't want any developers in our cities. We are right on the cusp of, this Main Street could mean something big, and to remove possibly one tool belt, like you said, it's not mine, or something in our tool belt, but it's one of twenty-six things, I think we run a real risk with that.
One, just a couple of comments here, because I think we've done a nice job trying to balance this thing out, and we spent a lot of time.
Not.
Way, way too much time, but we gave back for this. If you look at this, is it really worth putting a bathroom upstairs because you're going to get another thousand bucks back? I think it's because it's...
But it's not that. If you, if your family, it is.
People are upgrading their homes.
Because if your kids, your family has six thousand dollars, you're in, yeah, then they're in two thousand.
But let me ask you this, Mark. I, I heard that too, but what's the track record there? How much has, has our value increased in the value of the school tax base, in the city's tax base increased because of incentives? It's not gone down as fast as over the years, it's been very, very long.
We have this.
But we, all the time, have people saying, I'm really worried about quality of our neighborhoods. We all talk about it. That's a really, it's a really good thing, so I think we...
And we've had this, and nobody's really been on it to really improve that. There's more to that than we're at issue on this here, was what I'm saying.
Right. But we're going to have it. We have a city newsletter that's going out, it's for our home.
I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm open looking at balancing out like we are here, but really, as much time as we've spent on this thing, it's worth it if they ask me as much time as we've put in this. And there's things about the housing, you know, we need to get that straight out, about the housing officer and how that is going to be...
That's one of the other...
That's the issue, that's the issue.
That's a different issue.
Why do we allow this?
That's a sweet statute.
Yeah. See, that's, that's... And that's, and that's a problem, we do need to go down the road for what we're going to get at.
Add that layer of protection, or if anything's going to come, so we'll at least be in...
And we'll be able to, to do what with it, though?
Nothing.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But we've gotten rid of all of the...
But any, any person, understand that any person that's agreed by the decision of the housing officer, that's really wide open, can appeal. And the housing council then makes the determination whether or not it met the criteria. And by getting notice right away, it's at least an opportunity to take a look at something before, a year before it would receive its first tax abatement. And that, that's not a pro or con, it's just that what you've put in there gives you that, that window that you didn't have.
Yeah, Mr. President, just from an administrative perspective, because we have spent a lot of time on this, but it seems like two of the key issues, the first one had to do with the classification of residential property versus commercial, which is why we had, why we have the problem that we have now, with the housing officer making one decision on such a large piece of property, which over thirteen years was nearly a billion dollars, like about nine hundred thousand, so that's the Northridge Apartments. So, one thing administratively that we would like to resolve, because there are some restrictions as far as new commercial and expansion, really seems to have a problem with, because there would be a formal process where not only the council, but then the schools would have a review for that approval, correct? And then the residential, if you have new residential, or a rehab of residential, making sure that that's classified in accordance with the state classification, which is residential is anything that's less than, what is it, four units?
Four or less is.
So, if we have residential classification for four units or less, that will avoid the housing officer in the future approving a thirty-nine unit or a hundred-unit apartment complex on his own. Because if the, if, we take a look at the letter that the schools, that Mr. Wendorf and on behalf of the schools had written to us, you know, one of their concerns was lack of transparency, and, but there is a restriction in the state law, which says if it's residential, whether it's new construction or an expansion, that there is no review by the schools, there is no review by the city council, it is solely up to the housing official, correct?
Correct.
And it's intentionally set up that way.
Correct, sir, to keep the politics out of it, it appears.
Okay. So, as long as it's a smaller amount, which is maybe adding on the bathroom, or adding on an addition, and that was, I believe, the intent of the previous councils, was to give that housing official the full authority, because it's just a small intention of the previous council, but the state, because it's just a smaller amount, and if there's, you know, if the applications weren't coming through, it could be because people aren't aware of it. I mean, we, we don't know that yet, we could put it out in our newsletter, but, so administratively... But, so administratively, what we would like to do is just make sure that the new legislation is residential classification very clear, that it's at least four units or less. And, and as far as the amount, are we permitted, is the city permitted to put a cap on it? So you could put a cap saying that it wouldn't exceed fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, is that possible?
The, the parameters that you're permitted to work with is up to, depending the circumstances, if it's new, it's refurbishment. Depending on the number of units, I believe twelve years, four to fifteen. And then the commercial, that's just based on an agreement. It's just for each of them, they, they can't be over that fifteen years for the new construction. It can't be over one hundred percent.
Okay, and I guess administratively, we are concerned about the residential portion, because that's where the housing officer has the sole authority to approve things. So our concern, and I've talked with a number of our council members, like all of you on this, is that if we can change, we do think that it's a good tool. It hasn't been used very often. You know, when we say a good tool, I should, I would say that it's a tool. Whether, whether it's a good one, I mean, obviously, right now, we haven't had a whole lot of participation in it. It could be because we haven't promoted it and people don't know a tool. But one thing that we would ask is if there is, we're very comfortable with the commercial, CRA, for new commercial and expansion, because the school would have a say in that. And they could turn it down if they would like to, but at least it's available. And the residential, as long as it's less than four units, and if, and we just don't wanna have happen again what we had happen.
All right, if I, if I could interrupt here. We promised last week that we could have.
I'll make a motion, public speaker.
Does the fair say aye?
Aye.
Close the same sign. Motion carries.
Is there a limit in time?
Yeah, I ask, Mr. Wendorf, I'd like you to be first. But I would ask that you, because we're already ten minutes over, be brief, concise, to the point. I would appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Absolutely, appreciate it. Thank you for your consideration this evening and for having the public speech portions now. You have a letter we issued to you this evening, and just wanna make sure to point out a couple things. The board's absolutely supportive of economic development. I don't think that's me. Absolutely supportive of economic development. We feel that it is the city's job to support, to finance that, not the school districts. As you know, in the letter, seventy percent of the abatements caused or awarded to a CRA, whether residential or commercial, seventy percent are tax dollars to the school, twelve percent to the city. Ten dollars, seven bucks is ours, and we, we need every penny we can get. When voters pass a levy for us, they vote to send that money to the schools. Yes, there's legislation in play at the state level in our ORC to redirect that or to move that by CRA legislation for this purpose. But again, we feel that it's appropriate for cities to finance economic development, not schools. Do wanna point out one thing. Yes, the city would be required to notify and ask for cooperation on a, a.
Commercial.
Commercial CRA. But it also says that if we do disagree, you can ask for any level up to a hundred. If we disagree, you can go ahead and do fifty percent for ten years without our permission. Once again, we feel it's very important that the schools receive the money, voted to them on the ballot, and that the city finances economic development. So true that we would have to have some conversation, and we would need to permit anything more than fifty percent. But we could not do nothing about fifty percent or forty-nine percent or less. We feel a CRA is detrimental to the district and our finances and our financial situation, and that cities are responsible for financing economic development. We feel that any CRAs or tax abatements that have been in play, be they improperly, illegally, we should be, do our past monies. And the Board of Education absolutely supports economic development. And it's a great place to live, it's a great place to work, it's a great place to educate our kids. We feel that in order to do so, we need all monies to do so. So thank you very much.
Jeff, can I ask a real quick question?
Yeah.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
I really appreciate your comments. When you say that you think that the burden's on the city to finance, and I think that we all feel very responsible for that, what, what vehicles are you referring to, I guess?
Property tax, tax levy.
Right.
When voters vote, they say this levy will be taxed for school purposes.
Right, so, and then what I hear you saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you believe that every dollar in the levy should go towards the schools?
That's due to the schools' buyer's advice code, seventy percent of those dollars.
And so then, I guess, so then you would be in support of us eliminating all tax abatements, the CRA, commercial, residential of any kind?
Yes.
Okay, and then what vehicles, you were talking about the city financing the economic development, what vehicles were you?
Those other tools and tool belts here. We're scrambling to find other tools. Hours. Anything we can get to try to raise funds. And, and I'm not being facetious in any way. That's, I mean, we're all, when the watering hole dries up, the animals look at each other differently.
Right.
Here we are. And, and so, I guess I don't have an answer for that for you, but.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. Could I start?
I have one more question. But if you understand that it's a short-term loss or a long-term gain, do you truly understand that aspect? Maybe not residential or, you know, the remodeling part of it, obviously not. But the commercial, you know, let's say it's, they ask for something across the street, and, you know, it's a fifty million dollar project, and over, you know, a hundred years, that's a huge amount of money to the schools. Where for ten or twelve of it, you're gonna get reduced by fifty percent. So I just hope you guys understand that we're looking long-term, that's our, that's our role. I understand when you're out, it's very difficult, and I was wondering this, but again, I just hope you all get it as well.
Do understand that. But at the same time, we're gonna have to go back to our taxpayers long before that to ask for more, because we didn't get what was due to us upfront.
But that's not fair to say either, because if that project will not generate any property taxes, they're empty or, well, you know, however long you can struggle to make those successful to an extent, you would be getting any. So by us incentivizing somebody to make it better and better, you're actually gonna get a whole lot of money than you would if you had the ten dollars.
What, what we need to do is to help, about inside knowledge. Okay, but inside schools can increase their property. So we're capped. On the day of the election, we get X number of dollars. If somebody.
You say.
Understand, yeah, so your twelve percent only grows when there's a new building or new construction or so on. That's the only way we can add to our tax revenues. Yeah, or a new levy. And so when we pass a levy, you're fortunate enough to get twelve percent. We're fortunate enough to get seventy, unless you redirect that. And we feel that, that you should use your twelve percent, use our seven dollar. I know we're in this boat together, I get it.
Right, I was just saying, but it's a real project, and by us incentivizing and it's keeping people together. Yeah, we're, we're really tools more, because you're getting seven percent of it. You know, you're getting bank the buck, running on. So I, you're getting seven percent of the property tax, we're getting twelve. So when we incentivize somebody to, you know, stay and you make it bigger and better, you're actually getting more out of it than we are, so we're really in this game.
But you're giving away seventy percent of the pie that we bought.
I see what you're saying.
But it's not there yet unless they come. If you get a draft, it's zero.
And if we can all come to some impasse and property ownership keeps sitting under that. And I think if we had, I mean, you can't imagine, I know there were CRAs, I know there were things that happened up there that helped build a length of what it is. And you have that, those great properties, I know that. But, you know, we keep talking about those apartments buildings. I mean, it was a trailer park beforehand. And yes, probably things were done wrong, but I think that probably fifty percent still would have been a big to have an apartment building that's there that has revenue and is, is a strong income base for our city. And the properties look better, all the businesses have flourished around it. I mean, that's worth thinking. And that will help you, you know, I mean.
Understand your thinking. We ask that you do that with your dollars, not the schools.
We do.
Yeah.
A lot of schools.
I do think, you know, Jerry, I, I think what you highlighted, and we all know this, really, that is that the major issue is the flaw in the funding system for schools overall.
Absolutely.
We all acknowledge that's a major problem.
House Bill 928.
We all agree.
And we all agree that, I mean, I think whatever possible, we've tried for our own benefit, certainly for the schools' benefit, to use essentially income tax grants that float with the benefit of occupancy. And so as a result, it benefits the people that are there, but it also, it's kind of a win-win for both people. We've, we've tried to avoid real estate abatements at all, if possible, and that's been a good thing too. But I know that we have lost some people, maybe for better or for worse, some, some buildings that have come to the city, because we've chosen not to be as aggressive, which has that benefited us? Probably, because we've been unwilling to do things that hurt the schools long-term. I mean, we had an instance of that this last year, where we said, no, we're not willing to do that. And so I guess the challenge here is the short-term versus long-term. That's the hard, hard balance that's there, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, what else would you need to address, counsel?
Mary Ann Baughman, three two zero Weber Avenue. CRA legislation being voted on tonight deletes tax abatements for residential new construction. This is good. It also specifies apartment buildings over four units will be considered commercial. This is not so good. The new legislation for new construction of commercial is silent to the percent of the abatement and the time span. Why are you changing apartment buildings to commercial and still be eligible for new construction? Stated to me privately, there is no revenue generated from apartments. Apartments only drain our city services. It's common knowledge that the developers of Waterside are going to build apartment buildings on the property. If apartments are deemed commercial, then we could have in Waterside another one hundred percent fifteen-year apartment tax abatement, like the one that started this whole uproar. A commercial tax abatement of one hundred percent for fifteen years recently happened in the city of Green. And the article I read in the Beacon Journal, the school did protest it, and guess what? Didn't matter, just like Superintendent Wendorf said. They can be a part of it, but they have no power. It is my understanding that school boards are notified if there is more than a fifty percent commercial abatement, but they have no say. They only have a say on the commercial abatement if there is a million dollar payroll. Now you know that there is no million dollar payroll in an apartment building. There's no payroll. I ask that you keep apartment buildings residential, like our zoning says. That way, they won't be eligible for the CRA. This would be a wise economic decision for our city.
One three oh seven February Street, southeast North Canton, Ohio. A strong educational system, school system, is the most important economic driver for any community. Any public policy decision that does not subscribe to that, thought is a flawed policy. Any public policy that undercuts the financial resources of its educational system will lead that community into blight and decay. CRA property tax abatements undermine strong, vibrant school systems. With administration in. What in the world do you think the CRA property taxes do to the schools? Put you under a pretty good strain, doesn't it, maybe? Why would you do this? How can you sit up here and barter away revenue that is desperately needed by our schools? There is no logical reason for any of this. I have heard politicians describe North Canton as a forty-five million dollar a year corporation. Why don't you treat it like a business? Compile an analysis of the abatements that have been given. Schools have either benefited or suffered from all the abatements that have been made. Don't tell me that the school realized, will realize an increase in revenue decades later, Mr. Griffith and Mrs. Keesling, such as I've heard from a member of council who works in the banking world. Try means standard of living or the reduction in income. Would it be much consolation to you if your employer told you that you can look forward to a boost in salary in the year twenty twenty-six or twenty thirty? How are you gonna make your mortgage payments, your car payments? How are you gonna survive? Gold at the end of the rainbow is gonna come, you're gonna be out of business. In the timeframe over which property tax abatements have been given out, list the businesses that came to the city without abatements, and there's been many. The insurance company there on Apple Grove, the, the Mogo Home Park that everybody was so distraught about up here. Was it Jeter Insurance or, can't think of the name, come over.
Cooz. Juster Cooz.
Juster, yes.
It's Cooz now.
CVS, located right there, butting the horrible Mogo Home Park. O'Reilly's, across the street, we have a huge dollar channel that's going in. And you're sitting here telling me we have to pay people to come to town? What about Anchors Two Denses down in South Main? You know, follow the requirements that were on the city's website. Counsel went ahead and approved it after I pointed out that it was wrong. He came back and rescinded it when I wrote a letter to the prosecutor about fraud, and counsel had to rescind it. Mr. Foles was here, Mrs. Keesling was there. Ordinance number fifty-two twenty sixteen is littered with language allowing abatements for new residential. There are at least ten different references to new construction in the legislation. How can you amend an ordinance with a resolution such as you are attempting to do resolution you have on tonight's agenda? That resolution, as Mrs. Baumann just pointed out, is a slide where you categorize and create a different pathway for a CRA property tax abatement for new residential. You must think we're stupid out here, and it infuriates me. Lastly, how many more rental properties does this city need? How many more apartments does this city need? Mr. Frye, that'd be a good little research project for you. I've heard, we've had, the residences here in Northampton, rentals are like forty percent of the city. We ought to have some data on that before you make these kind of decisions. A highly successful and vibrant city school system is, that is financially strong, is the only economic driver that North Canton needs. Everything else will follow. People will flock here, and they will be tickled to fix up their newly found house here in North Canton without abatements. North Canton does not need a CRA program. Please, in this madness and in the creation of inequities in our tax system. And Mr. Fox and Mrs. Keesling, to say that people could qualify for these tax abatements six months after you've terminated the ordinance is insanity. Once you've terminated the, the ordinance, they're finished. And then you also pitch out there, the housing council is there to provide checks and balances. The housing council never sees these abatement requests. They see them a year later. As long as there's no deterioration in a property, they have no, no choice but to approve it. So there is no checks and balances built into any of this. Please, and Mr. Peters, I have to applaud you. We talked last week briefly, and I said, why don't you just totally end this? And you have kind of stepped up here and suggested that. Where are your other members here? members here? How about codes enforcement? How about changing the zoning code in the proper manner by way of the planning commission and public hearings and eliminate R-50? Slowly let them go out of existence.
That's a little farther down the pike. We're talking CRA right now. Do you have anything more to add regarding CRA?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Tripp?
Larry Tripp, 1127 East Maple, North Canton. Again, tonight I see more discussion on CRAs. Why? Discussion after discussion on a program that for over 16 years has proved to be ineffective to the average homeowner. You've done nothing to prove CRA program will be beneficial to this city. Councilman Griffin, you could lower the threshold to $5,000, and I believe your participation 16 years from now would be the same as you've seen for the past 16 years. What's that? Three to five homeowners in the designated area. I can show you in North Canton, home after home, that has been remodeled, renovated in the past 16 years without an abatement. Why do people remodel? Why do people remodel and update their investment? Available monies, livability, resale value, and pride. Face it, CRAs are not for the average homeowner, but appear to be geared towards large business and developers. Councilman Saretta, you said it a couple weeks ago, let's get it right. I believe you could get it right by rescinding all previous CRA legislation, commercial or residential, and reunite a community still divided on this issue. Also, all suspicion of doubt would end as to whom future revised CRA would benefit. Councilwoman Keesling, I don't understand your part on abatements are only critical to the schools in the short term, for 15 years, let's say. So let's use $100,000 abatement a year. For the first year, you abate $100,000. The next year, you abate another $100,000. The third year, you abate another $100,000. So now, after the third year, you've already abated $300,000, right? Okay, this keeps going on for 15 years. Is that in the short term? Now you've extended it to 30 years, haven't you? Now, think of it. 15, $100,000 every year for 15 years, for 15 years. $100,000 first year, $200,000 the second year, $300,000 the third year, $400,000 the fourth year, and so forth. The fourth year, you've abated for 15 years. Think about it. I, you know, I'm kind of old, but I was just trying to, trying to think what you said. And you said they only get penalized for the short term.
I think she's...
15 years.
The term of the...
Abatement, now, I'm saying 15 years.
Correct, you're using that.
Okay, so the first year, they get $100,000 for 15 years via abatement. Okay? The second year, the same program, somebody else gets an abatement for 15 years. Now the schools... See what I mean?
We understand the math.
Okay, well, she obviously didn't. She was saying, Mr. Peters, that the schools only are penalized for the short term.
She does. She understands the argument I...
But I just wanted to make certain that, you know, it's not for the short term, it's for a lot longer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else wishing to address counsel, please step forward.
Good evening. Melanie J. Roll, 308 Cordy Street. I had prepared our comments, but they're not really pertinent because of what we've discussed. But I will start with ordinance 522016, which I think is scheduled for the second reading tonight on emergency. And it is not necessary to vote this legislation into law today. Folks are still reviewing what council and administration are attempting to put in place for the city's community reinvestment areas. So there's no need to rush on this. I think the schools, various citizens, all of you have somewhat changed your mind on what you thought was going to take place this evening. I'm still not clear what you're going to do with the housing officer as far as his ability to approve. Maybe one of you can clarify that on what conditions. I think that in the resolution, there are a lot of areas that need to be tightened as far as the length or percentage of exemption if you're going to go with the resolution. At one point, I heard you say you're going to scrap everything. I commend the schools for coming up and stating how much they're going to lose. Those of us that have been working on this for a very long time have had the schools' interest at heart. I think that you need to understand, they need the money now. If they have to have a levy, they want to make sure that they can tell the citizens that they have received the money that the citizens voted on to receive. As far as apartment complexes and how you zone those or grant those, that seems to be up in the air as well. I think the city's already exceeded the tipping point for apartments and rentals. We've talked about this repeatedly, and I have talked about it repeatedly. So we have that Waterside property that everybody is talking about that's hanging out there. It's zoned commercial now. I don't know how that will fall into what you are or aren't going to do, but that would also be possibly a big abatement that the schools cannot afford to lose that revenue. Lastly, and again, we ask, as we did on August 22, to rescind the tax exemptions for Northridge and 331 Harmon Street. Both were granted in error. The city should request the county auditor to collect all forgone taxes on these two properties. The schools need that money. They basically said that, I think if you send a letter to the auditor, that the funds can go to where they are supposed to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the CRA topic? Okay. We are 35 minutes forward, so what I would ask is, on the CRA legislation on the legislative agenda that we table, that we table tonight, and restart this conversation next week in committee. Is everyone okay with that?
Just a point of clarification. I don't disagree with the spirit of what you're saying. We do have a problem because of the 2009, 2010 CRA...
We do understand.
...having been approved in error. We need to correct that. So from a policy standpoint, no arguments there, but we need to make sure that that's removed from the books so that you don't have this tail issue of people applying for CRAs in a broader scope that aren't entitled to them.
That's the sole purpose of 5216.
Right.
Okay. There's nothing more I can add representing that, correct?
5216 just makes it clear in current legislation what you have state certifications in place right now for CRAs. Doesn't add, subtract anything to those. It puts in place what you have authority to provide tax abatements.
It does keep residential in, so...
You can't, not in anything.
Correct, we're doing resolutions that...
Right.
Right.
You already have it in place. That's the point. Right now, he has the authority and actually the duty to give those tax abatements. This just makes it clear for everyone that that right there is in actuality what we have.
So if Jeff wanted to propose legislation subsequent to tonight that said eliminate all CRAs, we could actually do that in one, instead of clarifying frankly, we could, that would do one piece.
Correct, but it is clear that because you have the six-month window, despite what others may have said, the Supreme Court is clear. If you leave a window open for those tax abatements, folks have that opportunity because they may be working on that right now, and it's ex post facto law. You can't say, "We're going to give you six months to complete your rehabilitation and so forth in your residential property," and then you can turn in your application for your tax abatement. If you're in the area and you need the criteria threshold, you'll receive it. So you can't now tell those folks, "You're halfway through, and we're sorry, but we're not going to give that to you." The, you would absolutely lose that argument for the reason you've already given the authority to turn those in within six months of completing it.
So we've got six months, another week.
Another week's not going to make a difference. Let's make sure we get the word right. Well, that's with, the 5216 just puts in place what you already have. If you wish to terminate everything, and you do that in another ordinance, saying, "We're repealing all of these. We're essentially dismantling all of our CRA programs," we'll be very specific on those ordinances, that those are now repealed and there's nothing in its place. What will survive is those that are already receiving tax abatements. They'll continue to receive those, and then applications for residential up to six months from the date of when it becomes, the legislation becomes law rescind.
Basically, another week's not going to affect one thing. So I am going to ask that we table all the CRA legislation tonight. We'll revisit this in committee next week. Is that a matter of all, everyone?
I'll second that, because I know when it comes into it, we can do...
What's going to be different next week?
Because what, I guess what you can do instead of re, well, hold on, let me stop there. What's going to be different next week is, I would like to introduce legislation, to send it all. And we can take a vote on that and see where we...
Which would create a correction in a different way.
Yeah, instead of repealing and revising, it's all repeal, and we're clear, we go all the way down.
And one more week, isn't it?
And if you do it as emergency becomes law the next day, that's when the window starts for that six-month period. The others, as I said, will continue. If you have a tax abatement right now, that will continue so long as you meet that criteria of maintaining the property, and the housing council will have the responsibility to inspect those properties with the housing officer annually to see if those properties are continuing to be maintained. If they're not, they can withdraw and adapt.
Okay. Are we good? All right. I entertain a motion to adjourn the special...
So...
Those who favor that, those close same time, we are adjourned. We're going to act a call and order the Canton City Council meeting Monday, September 26, 2016, 7:45. Open prayers, Reverend Steve Stoltz Pastello to hear.
Steve, everybody, we have all the members.
Yeah, that's true. Mark, would you like to, if there's anybody out there would like to say the prayer of saving?
Mark?
Go ahead, Mark.
Dear Lord, thank you on behalf of all of us who gather here today. Thank you for your many blessings you have bestowed upon us and our community. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing this responsibility. Give us the courage, the determination, and the compassion to govern the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Give us the confidence to know what is good and fitting for our community. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a creed and justice for all.
Character counts. Here? 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 Thank you. Up first, presentation by the folks of IRG. Jeff, welcome.
Welcome.
Mr. President, do you want, are we going to do the character counts also when you do that first meeting? Because this one might be a little long.
How long's a character count, if you just...
We're just going to introduce the resolution.
I'll tell you what. Brett, can we? Can you do me a favor? Could we step aside for like five minutes here? We've got a presentation that's going to take very quickly. A proclamation, would I do that for character counts and then, because I know this is probably going to be a little longer. All right. Thanks, Brett. I appreciate it. All right. Anyone else?
Yes, our character counts, roughly, center.
And Mr. Winor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just passed out. Needless to everyone, I think we should work around, I guess, I'm sorry. We're just trying to help the community. It's great characters, all it is, and members...
We have a unique thing in North Canton. Character counts is part of the community and not just the schools. And several folks in the executive committee serve as our police chief, and some others serve our chamber of commerce president, myself, students, both middle school, high school, and several other folks represent the community, serve on North Canton community character counts, to help us do things. And so we appreciate the city's recognition and best wishes.
I would be honored to stand right here in front of the line to a proclamation. We'd like to introduce, and Mr. Winor, this is your first meeting, first city council meeting, a superintendent. The good thing is, we have council members that have good character. We've got, we've got, this brings in also our school board members. We've got great school board members, and we have some of them here in the audience, our school administration staff members. We really do have a very nice community. And what I'd like to do is just read a proclamation. And I think that really what separates North Canton from all the other communities is the people that will be out here, and it's the character of those people. And so what we want to do with the character counts program is continue to build upon that. And I'll just take a minute to read this. Whereas young people will be stewards of our communities, nations, and world, and the present and future well-being of our society requires involved, caring citizens with good character. Whereas concerns about the character training of children have taken on a new sense of urgency as violence against youth threatens the physical and psychological well-being of the nation. Whereas more than ever, children need strong and constructive guidance from their families and their communities, including schools, youth organizations, religious institutions, and civic groups. Whereas the character of a nation is only as strong as the character of its individual citizens and its public good benefits when young people learn that good character counts in personal relationships. and its public good benefits when young people learn that good character counts in personal relationships. Whereas scholars and educators agree that people do not automatically develop with character and therefore conscientious efforts must be made to help young people develop the essential traits and characteristics that comprise the character. Character development is first and foremost an obligation of families, while efforts by faith communities or schools and youth, civic and human service organizations also play a very important role. In July of nineteen ninety-two, the Aspen Declaration was written by a group of educators, youth leaders, ethics scholars, for the purpose of articulating a coherent framework for character education appropriate to an diverse and pluralistic society. The Aspen Declaration states that effective character education is based on core ethical values, form the foundation of a democratic society, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring and citizenship. And these six pillars of character transcend cultural, religious and socioeconomic differences. So whereas a group of North Canton community leaders and caring citizens have joined together to form an organization known as Character Council in North Canton, dedicating themselves to bring this program into the homes, the businesses, schools and organizations of the city of North Canton, and I would encourage all citizens to model the six pillars of character in an ongoing commitment to promote character development and ethical behavior of the youth of our community.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Brett? You guys are up.
Your good God. Good evening, name is Frank Lender with Main Street Properties. Mr. Serrata invited me to come out tonight and discuss the progress of West Factory. Uh, we were buildings across the street and I would like to run out and share where we're at. The West Factory is a lot older buildings than the East Factory. There are already hobby high five businesses in the area. The East Factory was crowded until the sixties later and the West Factory, which is old as nineteen fifteen, I believe, is when they started the first building there, building three. So I'd like to talk a little bit about what we've done today and then we're rolling. We've had to do a lot of roof replacements. Early reports said there was a pipeline in some ways for us. We've had to resurface and we had to completely tear off some placement and discovered lots of damage there. We've also come in and done the improvements related to the cattle systems and herds and everything else that needed consolidation. The departments in retail were running in for all means of retail, including cleaning, foot, police lines up through the roof. It was all dishwasher, so we're cutting the retail and comment. We reactivated a very large light power that has a lot of character we're going to find. Some of you may remember that some going in the past, they actually put wood crusts over the shingle. What we were able to do historically is remove the shingle roof and the crusts and reactivated the light power and that's the B section, that black B section, you see in the middle top of the photo there. This is a shot from some four floor framing of the apartments. And you can really see how much light these work monitors bring in this space. All these apartments are gonna have unique views, unique floor heights, very tall ceilings and so a very exciting piece. One of the things we discovered through the demolition process is there was a lot of hidden damage to the building. There was a lot of wood pack decking that was destroyed due to leaks over the years. So we had to go back and place a huge amount of wood decking on the roof deck as well as on the floors. The construction pipe in this building is called wood pack floor. It's actually when a few high floors on edge packed together pipe. So historically, we replaced it in time, preserve the building. This is a picture of, you have a building five floor, working in the apartments. Kind of gives you an idea of the grandeur and scale. This is a picture within the apartment. Walls are built right now at about ninety-five percent of a frame on all the apartment units. Electrical, plumbing, teledata, fire alarm, as followable as that is. Endless miles of wire, this is electric, it's hard working and all the units right there. And this is one of the units where we've started to hang dry. We're trying to expedite a handful of units to use them as model suites. We've had a lot of interest and requests. We're also putting in a floor topping for sound bedding within the suites. Since we are keeping a lot of traditional exposed ceilings, we need to provide sound barrier between units top and bottom. So we have a cords and patience floor over a musical mat that actually prevents noise transmission or reduces it between floors. Believe it or not, we're placing all the windows on the outside of the building. The original wood windows look very similar to ones that were in the building from the eighties and nineties. The ones we're replacing have simulated divided lights where the grills are actually between the kings and lice. The ones that we're replacing with are historically correct, where the molding is on all three faces. So provides that true divided look. Unfortunately, from a distance, it's a little hard to tell, but you see stickers in the windows, so those ones we parked in place. A corridor over looking at the courtyard that we activated on that bit. This is another contractor working on running the fire alarm system, building fire department and retail. This is just another interior shot of a apartment underway with finishes in progress. Building three, facade challenges, that's right there from the powerhouse. That is the oldest building on the campus. And we got a lot of restoration due to the brick skin in this building. We replaced three to four parrot bays on adjacent building number four. Building three's facade looks like it was in its shape, but as soon as we started replacing the windows, we found out that the windows were actually structurally integral to facade at this point. So we started removing, we ran across more of the air issues and we have relocalized the basin, a corner. We're not ready to re-schedule that corner and do all the historically correct structural and cosmetic apparel to building number three. Now something to keep in mind on building number three is here's the west lawn. I know that this is a sore subject and I don't blame anybody in this room because I wish that the west lawn was complete too. Unfortunately, due to the challenge with the lawn, we have to deal on the west lawn before we can go back and put in the landscape, bend and curving and everything else. But we're getting very close to being able to do that. And I'm working with the contractor right now to try to get the west curb line so that we can finish the restoration of the lawn area between Main Street and the parking area well ahead of all the rest of the construction activities against the building. Because I feel the roughness enough, we need to put that place back together. This is a picture of what west lawn looked like. Worked with planning, Councilman Serrata and many other people within the city come up with a crude layout for what the west lawn is going to look like. So we're very excited about this one. You can see the, about green space, fountain and trees being replaced. We created a new courtyard that did not exist in recent effort within the building. Several of these buildings were long, very long, narrow buildings and as we were needing more space over the years, they actually improved where they'd come in and put a new roof in, the first story or second story level. So what we did in this courtyard between buildings ten and building five is completely removed one of these one to two story in-built sections to create a courtyard that's gonna be fully landscaped and accessible to the public along the Main Street side. Got bases working in the distance camera, I see them from here, let's get the next slide. This is the same view. So it's a pretty rapid transformation and you can really see how close we are with the demolition and the restoration work and everything else we're doing, so.
Because that, that was all filled in.
That was inside the building.
So it was all demo.
Will that be commercial or residential in those?
On the second, third and fourth floors, it could be mountains, was the residential. And the first floor will be a combination of retail and eventually office users. Setting them on there. Now, a very important piece for us is the discober stack. We're trying to be the best possible custodians that we can be to this iconic piece. It has some very severe structural issues. Everything, from acids, from original coal burning, heating and water and everything else. We had multiple structural engineers come in and give us advice on what we can, can't do with it and what can be saved. At the end of the day, they said that we had to take the stack down to a structurally sound level. Believe it or not, the upper section of the stack was only two bricks wide. It's not as thick as you might think. So as the border became, it turned into a little safety issue, so that's why we took it out. We had engineers and architects in place to give us a path moving forward. We hired a company, International Chimney, to do the restoration work and they're like the rock stars of chimneys worldwide. If you can believe this company, I've heard that does that. They moved the gate out of his lighthouse, three hundred yards in one piece. So we had waited a little time to fit into their schedule, but didn't want any normal mason that can do a chimney on a house to try to attempt something to the station. So they're on site, the building. We had to take it all the way down to the eighty-five foot level. They already put about ten feet back on it and we were ninety feet below. We were using elder brick and historic fire blaze white ledering for the remaining in the back of it per original construction drawings. So we're extremely excited about that.
That'd be nice.
These are just some isometrics of different losses to the two bedroom block unit. One of the interesting things about putting apartments into older commercial spaces is sometimes the floor depths are a little bit too deep. And the way that they accommodate that is they sometimes take some of the interior veterans and raise them off the steps so that you have a daylight view out of the bedroom looking over the top of the living space now on the other side. This is a one bedroom unit. This bedroom unit is not locked in, generous living space, nice outside windows for the bedroom in this particular one. Ice-shaped kitchen, solid surface countertop and island. This is an example of a one bedroom that is, has balcony attached to it. So the balcony is actually the face of the historic Mill Island. The balcony actually comes inward building. There's a solid wall of glass at that point with the door in it and it passes that as the living space on the inside. So we're able to keep the historic look from the outside of the building without having to be overlooking the courtyard outside. Appreciate the opportunity to update you, just high level on the timeline. We've been working through, not forgetting historic tax credits and the good news is is that we just got a buyer for historic tax credits. And what historic tax credits allow people to do is to develop historic buildings versus the character of a building new. Doing a renovation of a project like this is far cheaper to build it and put something in style slightly. Costs about thirty, thirty-five percent more than your historic existing building that already exists. And this picture building has had its logo share of ten jewels that we've gone across that take an additional time, additional money to repair. For that assistance, if you've done it correctly, historic specifications and we're doing a protocol hall of the building proper.
So on the one and two bedroom apartments, since it's a historic grant, you have to use those apartments for the first five years? Is that correct?
Typically, with historic tax credits, they have to use the apartment the first five years.
So is the goal to attorneys in condominium units in the near future after that period of time or?
I'd have to get back to the construction side of the comments.
Well, I was noticing a lot of the stick framing inside and I was just anxious to hear this every bug in Serrata the whole time. But what's your anticipation now for these units to be completed, the one and two bedroom units?
We're looking around the second quarter, beginning of April last year.
Okay. Do you think there's a chance that, because I've been watching the Hall of Fame project, it was quite impressive over the last twelve months. And I know that when you guys get some money, you can really make things happen. I'm excited to see getting that yard squared away. You know, I saw the scap that get dropped today for the front to fix the facade, right? Do you think that'll happen before winter and do you have any anticipation of, you know, taking some of the yard and be able to put a rough draft of flat top down before winter?
That's what I mentioned, is my goal is to get the west most curb line of the parking lot in.
Okay.
So that we can get some minor ground under the wall off of and also get a great restoration of the grass between curb line and Main Street.
Okay. I noticed they did some work today and cleaned up the yard a little bit, put some fencing up and just tidied it up, which I appreciate. And I think the smoke stack, that's gonna be, I mean, it's just, we had that festival, I got a lot of bombarded questions in regards to getting the project wrapped up, you know, they thought we forgot about us. And I know what can happen because I've been watching it for a year, we're at the HOF. So I just am excited and I hope that we, you know, can help in any way and help expedite this quickly, so.
Well, Mr. Serrata's help would break into our attention. I've had to walk up to West Lawn without my riders on, just look at it, ordinary set of seventy more fence was torn up. The grass was growing and one of our other groups took down the leasing signs. And that was a little basic, you know, what does that say to the community when they take down the leasing signs?
Yeah, they're down.
It was an important thing through switching, bringing off the, our leasing people and they're gonna look their signs up there so to sit down to maybe their students is happening. So I really appreciate, I'm just glad that somebody seems to my attention. So that I can look at it and freshen eyes and say, "Patrick, we really need to address this."
We appreciate it, we're just anxious to see the progress.
We're very anxious to complete it. Had an opportunity to talk to some of the markets twice this year and it was a real great conversation. And sharing the excitement of all of it.
I mean, capitalize on that. I mean, I know you have the wear and fall to do it, but Stu is a powerhouse, you know, we'll say like a little Donald Trump, right? So get it done, that's what I'm excited about, let's get it done.
Brett, I had a couple of questions. We're excited about what's going on, it's just the process has been slow. And I know you've addressed some of those issues, being a historic building, but as Councilmember Fonte alluded to it, it seems like the Hall of Fame came and we're all for this area around here and all the money or all the resources went there and this is kinda just chugging along. And I'm hoping that's not the case, you know, and I referenced this by going back to a January article that we should would have brought in and said that the smoke stack was supposed to be up by late in spring or, you know, we were looking for fall for some of the apartments to be rented out. And now, you know, obviously I know you've run into some things, being a historic building. It's refreshing that you show everybody what you had to do. I think that helps your cause as far as why it's taken so long. I agree with most of the council that. I agree with most of the council that I've had a lot of questions, but I don't think the smokestack's ever gonna go back up. I've heard these comments from our residents. And, and really it's frustrating, because we're told that it is, and now you have ten feet of it done, and I applaud you for that. I know you're gonna work well to the, the season as long as it allows you to, but I don't know, you know, another month, these are gonna get done. And, and you explained that you'll wait on the rock star chimney company to come in and do that. I guess those are the kind of things we needed maybe to have more communication with, so we knew as a community of what was gonna happen. I understand waiting to get the best to take care of this. We want this to last a hundred years as you do. So I think that's the frustrating thing. We know it's gonna be great when it's done, it's just when is it gonna get done? And, and if you're saying next year, third quarter, I hope it's in, I hope it's not, we're not talking about two thousand eighteen. You know, that, that, those are my points. And I'm trying not to, listen, you've done, your group has done a great job with the commercial under this. And we all want this to be finished and to have people move in. And it's something we're all very proud of, obviously. I just hope it can go a little quicker now, since you've addressed some of these internal infrastructure issues.
Just like I say, that this project is type of taking on the backseats in the Hall of Fame.
Okay.
My heart's on this project, it's a wonderful project. And a lot of it has to do with tiny, tiny, tiny pieces and getting the correct pieces approved and pushed through. We do have to state our next office, to get clarification on construction pipes that aren't even on today's codebooks. So it seems like every change you make, you have to go back down to the historic guidance of the long list as well as national to get any minor deviations approved. So unfortunately, it's just a painful, slow process with the care that we're going ahead and quality we're putting into it and staying the best of time. And with the amount of money we've put into today, I believe over twelve million dollars, we're not getting any improvement. So it's an ardent thing for us to, to raise the limits.
To rent it out and get your.
Yeah, absolutely. We're excited for you, and I know the synergy of the people from the seven twenty group. And just the, the festival we had, we had this beautiful day, and we had a lot of conversations. So everybody's pretty excited. And I think by communicating with us, it helps us to filter it through the community. I just, it's important for us to know what's going on, so we thank you for bringing this up to speed.
Exactly. I, I'd even welcome a tour for some of us where we can, like, to see the progress that you've made. I also would welcome a collaboration with you on Portage, Charlotte, some of the, some of our gateway or entryway areas to work with you financially. So maybe some tip money or, or something down the road where we can, we can all work together to make sure that when you come off seventy-seven, as far as the entrance or exit ramps, you wanna drive up here and, and enjoy this beautiful structure when it's gonna be built, the commercial under it as well as the residential. So that's, I think our hearts right there with you to do this, and I'm looking forward to that.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you.
Brad, thank you very much for taking my mind.
Also, if I could just a quick, Brad, that was an excellent presentation. I think one of the challenges that we found through the whole redevelopment of the Hoover District is that there's so much work that goes on to the inside. When you look at the outside, it doesn't appear that there's much activity. But then with the pictures that you've shown on the inside, there's a significant millions of dollars worth of investment in construction that's already been done. And, but when you're looking at just from the corners of Main Street and Maple, it, it looks as though there's not progress that's being made. And we've seen that when we were building the improvements over along Maple Street. When you walk into that building, it's transformed. I mean, you folks have done a fantastic job. We know you're committed to this, we appreciate you coming in. And also appreciate the work that Councilman Mark Sarada's put into communicating back and forth with IRG to make sure that everything keeps moving along. And, and we appreciate the council's patience. One other point on the, on the smokestack. The approvals that we had to go through, that IRG had to go through, not only with the city, but through the state, were very extensive. Because there, there were earthquake requirements that needed, needed to be met. It wasn't just a matter of running up the concrete. And all of those requirements have been met, so now it can be built. And I did talk to Chris Samarigin, who is the owner, along with Stu Lecter, talked with both Stu and, and Chris Samarigin, who is your boss, the owner. And he said the delay really was in the financing, getting the financing approved. He said it's just a lengthy process, but they're ready to go, so, thank you.
We're looking for EPA stuff as well.
Yes.
EPA stuff that should be completed as well, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And I say, Brad, I'm just helping everyone to have been, we're back and forth, and we are gonna be taking on October twenty-third a group of twenty to thirty something year olds from our spotlight, start county class on a tour over there. And the response was wonderful, I mean, it was in the day, I can't forget, was it Greg and, and Brad? Greg, yes. I, you're up with lunch. I'm like, don't forget the phone, that's, that's awful. But your response, and I can say things, like, we do have these issues, we are looking at it, this is what the perception is, and perception is reality. And so for us to be able to take it through the twenty to thirty year olds, I mean, one of our prime markets, who would love to have over there, is wonderful. So thank you for being accommodating, since they're gonna have a tour. These young professionals, this is what they wanna see. And they continually say to me, we want to live in our pant, but we just can't find them today. So I'm thrilled that you're gonna have this, and thank you for walking, it's great.
Hey Brad, is there any way to get a copy of the PowerPoint presentation so I can post it on my website? So I can share with the community what the pictures of progress, since it's hard to see from the road?
Absolutely. That'd be nice.
I can give my email to me.
All right, thank you.
Very good job. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Very nice.
Okay, moving on to the agenda. For your consideration, we have motion to second to approve as presented. Council meeting minutes, September twelfth, two thousand sixteen. Committee, the whole meeting minutes, September nineteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Motion to approve as presented. Okay. Yes.
Upstate.
Upstate.
Yes.
Upstate.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And at this time, if you have anything new to add in the interest of time, I entertain comments from the crowd. Nothing new, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, on to old business. May I have a motion to second to table, item number fifty-two dash sixteen?
So moved.
Upstate.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance number sixty-two dash sixteen?
So moved. Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Chairman Griffith with the TH.
We discussed this briefly. It's a, it's a liked program, we participate in it, again, we participate when it makes sense for us, Mike, anything we finish on?
It's just a national program, something like the Ohio Cooperative Purchasing that we're in now. So it gives us one more vehicle to look at prices.
No downside. And if there are no questions, I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you. You have a motion to second to table, resolution five dash sixteen? Second.
I don't see a number there.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're, okay, I apologize. Your agendas don't have the number, we attached the number five to it, it just wasn't put on the agenda. I had a notation to say something to you guys about that. It's resolution five dash sixteen.
Do we need to table it, or can we just not vote to bring it to the floor?
If you don't vote, it's, it's defeated. If you don't bring it to the floor, if you table it, it's, it's still there. Unless there's a longer record, if there's another.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're absolutely certain what you're going to do next week, then, then don't. You know, if you don't vote for it. If you're not certain, this is what you asked for the last time you met. So you can table it and bring it up and decide Monday.
Can I have a motion to, a second to table?
Wait, I think we did that very great.
We have a motion, second to table, okay.
Are we, what are you asking?
Motion to second to table.
I'll motion to table.
We already did.
Why are we asking you to table? Then I'll second.
Say yes.
Exactly, say yes.
Don't say yes.
We table, we say yes.
Yes. Yes.
It's a roll call.
Yes, again. Yes.
Upstate.
Yes.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number sixty-three dash sixteen?
Second.
Wearing?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes. Yes.
Montague?
Yes.
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven yes to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand sixteen, and ordinance to appropriate and valid targets and specific agents to the credit by ordinance, is my understanding of the.
Thank you. Chairwoman Ware.
We did this really badly, we have to keep the current and just proceed to adopt.
Second. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of counsel for three readings for ordinance number sixty-three dash sixteen?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
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 Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to adopt our suspension of rules, ordinance number sixty-three dash sixteen?
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Wearing?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes. Yes.
Seven yes to adopt under suspension rules for ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number sixty-four dash sixteen?
Second.
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Wearing?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Golds?
Yes.
Montague? Seven yes to read by title only, the first reading ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand sixteen, and ordinance amended section twenty compensations, a chapter one five by personal regulations of part one, administrative code of the credit by ordinance, other than the North Canton, New Orleans with North Canton, ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand sixteen, to relieve the position of political chairman, previously appointed, and to add the duties of chief building officer to set the position and current his name to be your manager.
Yes, exactly how it reads. Engineer Benicos explained to us last week why we needed this, so we can pay the guys actually doing the work. And that's why it's under emergency, so we can pay them. So if there's nothing further to add, I'll retain a motion, second to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Montague?
Yes. Yes.
Seven yes to adopt the first reading ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to suspend rules of counsel for three readings for ordinance number sixty-four dash sixteen?
Second. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Seven yes to suspend rules of counsel for three readings for ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to adopt under suspension rules, ordinance number sixty-four dash sixteen?
So moved. Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Seven yes to adopt a suspension of rules for ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to table ordinance sixty-five dash sixteen?
Second. Yes. Yes.
Upstate.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Reports, remember Fonte?
No reports today.
Remember Ware?
No reports.
Keith?
I only wanna say a special thank you to the schools for coming to me. I, I really appreciate this, I'm so beginning to, I'll send some emails to.
I knew he was gonna make a stick around.
But I really do, I think it's very helpful for all of us, maybe really good for everybody, that makes it very important.
Please, if you have been, been to know, if they may not see that way. And we appreciate you listening, and maybe you should have another little, yeah, I wasn't at the church one day. If there's anything you want to discuss with Paul or Eddie, that's maybe, maybe you should visit and, you know, around the table.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Suzie. Good night.
Yep, thank you.
We, 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 I thought we discussed last week in committee, the street review, and it wasn't on our agenda.
Yes, we did, and, and Jessica was here, and I wa, and I wanted her to stick around. We, there were some questions. You know, Mike had given us a letter saying that it, based on what he thought, it was councilmatic action. And we tasked him with looking into it further to see if we could. Do you have an answer to that?
Yeah, but it's not appropriate for right now.
Okay. But yeah, that, that's the intent. If it is a councilmatic action, we're gonna do it. Does anyone have her number?
Yeah, I, I can count it.
Sure, okay, all right. If you could let her know.
Yeah.
Are you ready to?
I am.
Just, just a couple of things. The pool now is basically complete for the, for the winter. They did everything that we had talked about, the grass was planted, and now I'm just sitting back waiting for the grass to get gone. And hopefully I'll have some good weather for that, so that was a good thing to go out there and see that. Secondly, I'm gonna be talking to the Rotary this Thursday, and they're looking for ideas to sponsor stuff. So if you've got some ideas for them, come up to me and let me know if you have some things that the Rotary can do. And the other thing I think we should look at, Doug and I have been talking about this, we need to start really looking at it. And I saw it in the paper for Louisville, a sidewalk program that we can either change the ordinance or enforce. Because we, our sidewalks are getting out of control. So we need to really start taking a look at that over the winter here. So we come out of the spring, we can, you know, really kind of ramp up some of these issues that we have.
What do you mean, what do you mean by the sidewalks?
Well, we have some areas that are terrible with our sidewalks.
You mean we don't have them?
We have an ordinance in place for that. But when you start looking at it, that we don't enforce them. So we either gonna change ordinance, or we enforce them.
You mean that they're destroyed, or we need them?
No, that, they're destroyed. They're unsafe.
Existing sidewalks in each place.
You know, when they're on these Naples, there's some unsafe sidewalks, so we need to work on them.
Okay, that's why I was trying to figure out what they're doing.
So I think we should just all look at that, and I'm gonna be, try hoping with Doug South here leading the charge on that.
No, definitely. I concur. Woodrow's a beautiful street, but we've had some issues, not to pick on Woodrow with large trees that upheave some of the sidewalks. And, you know, unfortunately Dominion came in and they can ran some nice replacement line, you know, gas lines. And I think that we missed an opportunity to just tear everything up and do it. But I think we have to start thinking that way. You know, it's all getting back to code enforcement. Property values are only as good as the violations coming at, telling we gotta clean it up. And there's a certain threshold that we all want as far as minimum code standards, and there's nothing wrong with that. That's how we protect, we always say integrity, or I do, and we have to start looking at that. Whether there's tools for CRA, where this is going, we, we have to have other things we gotta be doing outside of that. So people know, when you live in North Canton, there's codes that are involved and you have to upkeep your property. There's no way we're gonna want that. Because that's what, you know, when you don't, the people next year that are good, housing stewards leave, and then what happens? And then the unknown comes. And then the unknown comes, as far as what happens to that property in the future when you know you already have a good family there, so I think that's good, I'm glad you brought that up.
It carries you, not to, if you, if you.
Right, definitely, you got a new perspective on this, and I'm welcome, so we're gonna have meetings to take care of it, go over some things that have been longstanding issues in Warren one, that Tim's worked on here lately, but we're still looking at the high grass, I'm gonna bring up nine twenty-two forty, basically every month until something happens, you know, I don't know, I, you know, I wish I could just wave a magic wand or buy it or do something with it, but I don't think it's available, but.
You gotta show yourself on that understanding, you have to have a short sale on it right now.
Well, it's a short sale for clover, it's the same song and dance the last three years, so, you know, we're still looking at five years of a, a violated code enforcement issue here, it's not, it's outstanding, and, and I talked to the resident lives on the corner, he's moving because, he's put a lot of money into his property, he put a fence there, he's, you know, he probably won't get out of it when he, when he needs to, but, you know, that's, that's what I want to avoid in the future, let's care about these things and take care of it, as best we can, we do a lot of work, we see it.
All right, thank you. Director Ball?
No report.
Director Finance?
No report.
Director of Administration?[1537.12]